Yeah, sure, sure.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the West Milford Board of Education, September 27th, 2016. I would ask that everybody silence or turn off their cellphones and notice the emergency exits. I would like to have a moment of silence. It seems that this is almost a monthly occurrence for the five victims and their families in the Cascade Mall shooting in Burlington, Washington. Flag salute, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its defense, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, the Record, AIM West Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and has been posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mr. Francisco.
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Dever.
Here.
Mr. Drew, Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Foodie.
Present.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Robbins, Mrs. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Huber, would you, if you were, read the executive session resolution, please?
I move to approve the following resolution. Resolved that the board go into executive session at 9:00 PM for approximately 60 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel, negotiations, ahib, and matters of attorney-client privilege.
Thank you.
The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Thank you, Terry. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Anamon, Superintendent's Report, please.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to touch base, a couple of quick hitters tonight. I wanted to thank all the community members, staff, parents who participated in the Color Run. The West Milford Education Foundation had on Sunday, the 18th, over here at Westbrook School. We had a wonderful morning on a Sunday. We had a few hundred participants, including plenty of staff, administration, et cetera. So, a lot of fun was had. We walked or ran a full 5K and we played with the colorful stars. There's some great photos online you can see on Twitter accounts and whatnot. So, it was a great event. We raised a lot of money for the foundation. And as always, the foundation funnels that money right back into the classroom through teacher grants. So, some of the more innovative programs you'll see later on in the school year will be as a result of the success of the Color Run. And it's my understanding we're already planning for Color Run 2 next fall. So, we don't have a date for you, but we'd love for everybody to participate. It's a wonderful event. Also, we have been working with the West Milford, I have been working with the West Milford Police Department, along with my administrative team, the Passaic County Sheriff's Department and the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office to plan ahead for a K-9 search of one or more buildings in the district, most likely West Milford High School, possibly even Macapin at some point if we deem it necessary. So, it's still in the preliminary stages. We don't know when it will be, what time, but we do have access to the K-9 units with the Sheriff's Department. So, we thank them for their cooperation and we're working with our local department to make sure it's done in the most organized manner possible so that people's rights are respected, but at the same time, we're trying to keep a safe school environment for all of our students and all of our staff. So, that will be at some point during the school year. I just don't know when. And obviously, once I do have a date, it won't be announced beforehand. It'll be, just will show up one day with the, with our K-9 friends. We're in the middle of, or near the end of Back to School Night season. We've had six already, six Back to School Nights already. Mr. Novak and I and Ms. and Dr. McQuade have been at all of them so far. We have two more. We have Upper Greenwood Lake tomorrow night and the high school on Thursday night that will wrap it up for us all. So, it's been a very busy month, but it's been a fun month. We've seen all of our buildings, all of our administrators, many teachers, parents, even some students have been participating to serve as guides. So, it's been a fun month for me. I've really enjoyed getting about and seeing all the wonderful things going on in the schools. And lastly, we do have one student suspension to report, out-of-school suspension at West Milford High School. I can't divulge specific information, but there was one out-of-school suspension this month. And our student representative is absent from school today, so we will not be having that report this evening.
Mr. Novak. Education Report, please. Be blinded by the light?
By the light.
Okay.
What I wanted to do tonight was bring the board's attention to a new link that's on our homepage. If you take a look at the top tab and follow my arrow, you'll see a little again, the West Milford Tech. And that is a link that was developed this summer with our Educational Technology Committee. I mentioned it a few times over the summer about some summer work that we had in place with our Makerspace group and our Digital Citizenship group. We also had a couple of other things going on. So, this has been our, our location for all things educational technology. It's a new link that we haven't had before. We've had some things on in the past, but they were, you know, at the bottom of other dropdown menus. This is a nice, nice place to go to and easy to get to. So, the front page has all of our Educational Technology Committee members. If you click on their name, it brings up their contact information. So, if you have a question, each building and level is represented.
Sorry, Dan.
You're too young to kick the bucket.
Yeah. A couple of, so I'll just go through the links very briefly. Meet the ETC that I just went. The After Hours Academy, that is a all-volunteer process that we have in the district. The AHA Academy, After Hours Academy, we have staff members who volunteer their time to train other, other staff members. So, we can have anything from Google Classroom to an app called Kahoot. That's a student engagement app in the classroom. So, we have, you know, quite a few staff members who take advantage either getting training or offering training through this process. And it's, you know, getting pretty popular. We also offered a new course this year in middle school. It's a Flex Perry called Coding from Scratch. And with all of the growth and discussion with coding and our work in STEAM and STEM, we thought it was a good idea to put all of the code links that are available. Code.org is one of the more popular that you would have seen in some of the classrooms and recommendations for students to use at home. But there's a collection of links there that gets students involved with basic coding. The next tab is one of the ones that we're more proud of. This was the, if you attended, and here's my early plug, Visual Citizenship and Literacy Night, which will take place this spring, our second annual. Last year, we promised at that event that we were going to put a collection of lessons in place, K through 12. This is the location for those lessons. You know, as you can see, they span, you know, kindergarten through 12th grade. And we have organized and sort of assigned who's going to be responsible for these at each level. They can be found in anywhere from our, you know, kindergarten classrooms to our media centers for 5th and 6th grade students to our freshman seminar, seminar course in the high school with Mrs. Nebiker and her, and her media center at the high school as well. So, we've got a nice, a nice approach where there's many stakeholders from our staff who are involved in it. It's not just one person's responsibility. It's sort of a team approach. And these are, these are the lessons and they're available for the public to see on this, on this site if parents want to go in and follow up, if they, you know, if the student comes home and said, "Oh, we did this great thing today about keeping my password private." You know, the parent can, can go in, very easy to find, and they can, they can help support it. And that's really one of the most important pieces with digital citizenship is the follow-through at home. We're going to take care of it in the classroom through awareness and the, and the teaching points, and we need that, need that follow-through at home. And all these links are available here. Google Tools, that's again, we've, you know, we're three years in now to utilizing Google Classroom and Google Apps for Education and with our, you know, our Chromebook rollouts over the years. So, we've put in one place a collection of the tools that we have found useful in our work with Google over, over the last few years. And it's a very easy link if you want to learn about it or, or work with it. You can go to the site and see what we're using in the schools. The next tab is still, this is still in development. We talked about, I've talked about Makerspace quite a few times. This is where we've placed a spot on our site for the definition and exactly what it is. And I will read, read this at you right now for what is, what is a Makerspace. Learning environment where students can collaborate, innovate, and create using information, resources, tools, and collections. Students can play, think, or explore, or pursue personal and/or educational goals. The other part I want to highlight, which is, I think, you know, sometimes a little bit more meaningful, but this is not just, Makerspace isn't just building for play. It's, it's connected to some very valuable 21st century standards. There's engineering involved. There's a, there's a lot of connection to the, to the standards that we were already working with. This just gives another outlet for, for students to, to use. Our, we're continuing to grow in that capacity. We had a committee over the summer, as I mentioned. We're putting it in place. We now have a common definition for, for the district. At some point, you know, I'd like the community to expect a plea for donations. We're going to be putting out a letter requesting anything from cardboard or the paper towel rolls to clean used Legos or Tinker Toys, or people want to clean out their, you know, their toy, their toy bins and that sort of thing. We're going to be sending a letter home, trying to get as much of that as we can. We call that the low, the low-tech end of Makerspace where kids can get their hands on it and really build and, and learn and, and come up with their own creation. We also have some of the more technological gadgets. We actually have one, I can see it from here behind Mr. Al Taib. It's a, it's a kit called Little Bits. They are electronic devices that can animate low-tech. So, if a child is working with a Makerspace with a collection of, you know, cardboard, tape, glue, aluminum wheels, these Little Bits are very, you see, Mr. Al Taib is holding it up there. This, that, that kit right there allows a child to animate the low-tech creation that they made. So, they can, you know, they can build, build a car out of, out of this cardboard and, and material and then have the ability to animate it with a working headlight or wheels that turn and that sort of thing. Very easy to use and we have it available in all our schools right now. So, that's, that's one of the fun pieces of it. So, more to come with that. We are planning a, a board presentation, a little bit more elaborate, where we actually bring some of the materials, put them here in the middle of the horseshoe and allow the board to come up and get your hands dirty and, and build something. We could take from the body language and see if that really, you know, see how that goes, but I think it would be a good opportunity for all of you to get your hands on it. And the last one, the last link, this one's still in development. This is something I've spoken about at the board meeting quite a bit with our implementation with the, the SAMR model of technology implementation. If you link, you click the link on it now. These are two videos that we've started off with for how to advertise what this model is and, and how the implementation of the SAMR model for technology is going to impact and change what we're doing in the classrooms. We have a committee who is still at work and they have, they've got quite, quite a bit done. It just hasn't been linked to this yet because it's not finalized. So, in the, the future connection to this website, you're going to be able to see what we're doing in the classroom. We're going to see examples of common technology tools and how they, how they connect to each levels of the SAMR model. And for those of you who are new to listening to the SAMR model, the, the letters SAMR stand for substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. And those are different levels of interacting with technology. And we're aiming to, to get all of our staff members and all of our students involved in all the levels in that model through, through our technology implementation. So, that's available and that, that's really, that's all I want to do. Again, I'll go back to the beginning where I started. So, you can see exactly where it is. Very easy to get back. I'll get back home. We'll be the link back home. All right, so there it is at the top. It's the main tab. Very easy to get to, not so easy to get out of. Thank you.
Could you repeat what SAMR stands for, please?
Sure. It's substitution. For example, this projector is a substitution for the old classic, you know, the old classic overhead projector. Augmentation. The recorder that goes along with it, that's an added, added functionality. Modification changes how you would interact. So, now if you're projecting using substitution, rather than the old classic overhead projector, I could use the projector now with my remote. Substitution, augmentation. A modification would be rather than sitting and writing like you are now, you could be using a Google Doc and you could be sharing it with Mrs. Schultz across the way. She could be adding comments. She, she could be saying, "Can you believe you didn't have a link to get back to the homepage?"
That's why we put our phones away.
And then the R is redefinition. That is if we recreate a, a video clip of me trying to get back to that site with, with the new way of, way of doing something. So, so what it does and what we had very, a lot of success with last year, that we, we have technology in place. We have, you know, you see, we've got devices in the, in the computer corral. We've got a Chrome Lab over here. We've got devices in all of our buildings. This changed the conversation from, "Do we use technology or not?" to, "How do we use technology?" And we saw, we saw tremendous growth in the last year with, with our staff and administration and the interaction with our kids. And now this year is just another, another step in the right direction.
Thank you.
You're all good, Dan?
We're good.
Okay. Barbara, Special Reports and Correspondence, please.
I have the four minutes from meeting minutes from August 23rd. I'll put up date on the roofs and we're still dealing with a few leaks. We have a construction meeting scheduled for Thursday to try to resolve and come up with the final completion date.
Did they, did they originally have a final or an estimated completion date?
There was a substantial completion date of
August some, yeah.
Right. But that also has to do with, you know, weather and so that gets pushed out if we have weather issues.
Yep.
Hopefully, it's not going to be much longer, but I think there's still problems with the metal.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it, they started last week in June when the kids got out of school. And I think the substantial completion date was August 19th. Does that sound about right? Right? So, that's, I'm looking at seven weeks, but, or eight, I guess it is eight weeks, the 19th. We're at, I guess, another six weeks at this point. So, if they're not done in, in two weeks...
The difficulty becomes when they have to work second shift. I think they're having a hard time getting people out of the hole.
For, for working at night. Okay.
And I think that a few of them might have come up in the beginning, but the trip up here is a little bit more difficult at, you know, I, I see people here at like 12 or 1:00 waiting to get on the roof at 2:30 in the afternoon. I think, you know, they've realized that the traffic gets a little heavy coming up at night, so they, they get here really early.
Okay. All right, Jamie?
Are there any penalties for not meeting a completion date?
Y'all can answer that. Yeah, there is. I think it's $500 a day.
It's $500 a day. There are some issues when you, when you're dealing with roofs, it's a little bit different because if it rains, they can't do the work. So, there's some contract issues there, but it's general, it is $500 a day for the missed completion date, less some other days that we have to go into. You know?
But there's some type of penalty.
Yes, there is a penalty.
That they can just have as long as they want.
$500 a day.
Okay. Which isn't a lot.
Well, could add up.
It's, it, it, it's not a lot of money as a, a per day.
Right.
Considering it's a $6 million...
Right, project. Yeah, that's, that's
Project. It's, it's a drop in the bucket, but my, my only concern is if we have continuing leaking into the building, that means everything that they did underneath, the new roof is, is getting wet. And at Macapin, that's not a good thing because that's a wood deck. So, that's, that's troublesome.
They're responsible for those issues under their contract and under their bond.
Okay.
So, if we discover any issues like that, we'll have, we'll have to deal with it and then go after them to reimburse us.
Okay. All right. Do I need a motion for the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, August 23rd, 2016 workshop regular meeting, August 23rd, 2016 executive session.
Thank you, Marilyn and Debbie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Our voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Legal report, Mr. Roselli.
Yes, I have a few issues to discuss later on tonight.
Okay. Okay. President's Report, relatively small. Anybody who's got board training that hasn't done it? Need to, I guess we need to, they need to do that before the reorg meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, you have three months. I know Glenn and, and Terry, you guys did yours. Debbie, you're good. Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Your training is up to date?
It should be, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I know, Mr. Drew, you said you hadn't gotten your, your done, but you got three months. You, you got, you got a best excuse out of them all. So... The solar, Mr. Setambrino did the, answered questions last week on solar. I hope that the board has had a chance to kind of mull through that in their minds for the, for the members who are here. And we'll, we'll bring that up shortly. The, as, as everybody is, can see, the library in the, next to the municipal building is getting closer to completion. I think it, it will be a, an asset to the community, especially to the school district. And I would humbly ask Dr. Anamon if there's any way that we might be able to, the buses in the afternoon that come from the main campus, the Macapin High School campus, if there's any way that that might be able to be incorporated as a stop for students who might want to go to the library and study. I think that's a worthwhile thing, I think it's something to, to talk about. I don't know what the logistics would be, but I think it's a, it's a worthwhile idea. All right? So...
I believe our high school library is open until 3:30. So, I think if you wanted to do that, you would have to use a late bus because the kids have extraordinary resources in our own libraries. And then when our library closed, they could go there, but I wouldn't want to discourage them from using our school library.
Oh, no, not, not, not at all. But if kids who are going home, they don't want to stay here, they got maybe two, three hours of studying where they can sit in one spot and do it instead of working here for an hour, just another option. It, it can't hurt to be, to at least be looked into and, and considered. I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile idea that maybe you should look at. That's it as far as President's Report is concerned. I'm going to move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their name, their, their full name, spell their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Barbara, has anybody requested to speak? Would anyone like to speak? Seeing none?
Seeing none, like to close petitions and requests.
Thank you, Debbie and Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Dever, need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
And I think we have a hand carry.
Including hand carries, sorry.
We have, we had...
Two hand carries.
Yeah, three under personnel and
One under budget.
One under budget and finance. Is there any other corrections that need to be done, Alex? No? Okay. Anybody want to ask, does anything be pulled separately, discussed? Yeah.
Terry did it.
Yeah.
Terry seconded.
Is there anybody else who, you know, want to pull anything? Any, any further discussion? Okay, then we will adopt the agenda as presented with the hand carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Drew. Budget and finance, sir.
So, we have removed, or seven is going to be replaced by a hand carry, is that right?
Well, no, we have to, we have to, number seven, we have to rescind that award. And then we're going to, the hand carry and award the new.
So, it does go all the way through 18 with everything?
Yep. But one through 11 first.
Right, but I just
One through 10?
You mean 11? One through 11 or one through 10?
11 needs to roll call, but
No. All, all do. One through 11. Okay. Thank you, Marilyn. Any discussion? Go ahead, Glenn.
Number five. What is that maintenance contract for? What exactly are they going to do?
This is a cord switch that we have a maintenance contract on an annual basis so that it's for the network.
That's not something that our guys could do, Barbara?
Mr. Al Taib, would you like to answer that about the cord switch? What do we have the maintenance contract for?
It's general support for, you know, it's, it's vendorable support on the cord switch.
Okay, so that's not, that's not anything that you guys can do?
It covers parts and labor.
Okay. 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 As, as we can see, was there any particular reason that we get a much bigger price or a better price, I should say?
On the vehicle?
On that, going from Precision to Warwick?
Well, what happened was the vehicle that they quoted us and that you approved when we went to purchase it, there was not available.
Okay.
So, I remember we've been going back and forth with them for about three weeks now and finally, we just said, you know, we have, we have one available at Warwick, so we're going to get it.
Are we paying more for the other one from Warwick or about the same?
No, it's less than what we had originally.
Less, okay. Okay. And then I got a question on number nine, Barbara? And then I got a question on number nine, Barbara. What was that?
It wasn't discussed in budget and finance. I think I might have alluded to it, or we've been trying to get this done since last winter.
Yeah, when that gas smell.
Right.
Evacuated the school.
And, and what happened was we only got one price. It was for $21,000. And naturally, I would not even entertain that. So when we installed the generator at the high school recently, one of our maintenance people got in touch with Norman Sheet Metal because we needed to fabricate a, something around the intake for the generator. And while I was over there, I asked him if he would give us a price on the stack. And he would.
Okay.
There's a four-week lead time. So we're trying to do it before the heating season really gets into full blossom.
Okay. And, and that, the guys discovered last winter when?
It would, yeah, we had to evacuate Macapin School last winter.
Yep.
Because they smelled the gas. The fire department had to come. And they identified the fact that the, the stack needed to be expanded or extended. And, um, so we are. Heating season again, and it hasn't been done.
All right.
So this is our best opportunity.
Okay, now it has to be done. Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, number eight, where are we putting the, the convection oven and the freezer? Which schools are those going to?
Is that UGL?
One's UGL.
Oh, UGL.
They had a residential type of freezer in there. And. UGL, yeah. We're both, both pieces of equipment. New freezer and a convection oven. They have an old pizza oven that they can't use anymore, so now they'll have a convection oven. Slowly all the equipment is breaking down to the point where it can't be repaired.
Everything has used for life.
Including me.
Any, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Barbara.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 12.
Second.
Those are bills.
Thank you, Debbie. Any discussion? Barbara, I saw in there that we are paying the auditor?
Well, we cut the check and then we hold on to it until after the presentation. We closed last year's purchase order.
Is he close to being done? When, when do we anticipate?
They came in to do some preliminary work. We haven't gotten a, a date as to when they're coming back. My guess is that it'll be some, completed sometime in, in November.
Then why are we cutting a check now? Are we going to dangle it in front of their faces to?
No, because it's last year's purchase order. So we try to clear out all the last year's purchase orders by September 30th.
Okay. All right, I, I had two other questions that Barbara answered earlier. We have, and the one that surprised me was Mr. Rashika putting in for Mileage reimbursements for, from all of last year, starting in August through. So that one, that one kind of surprised me. But anyway, any other discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Huber?
Uh, yes, as to payroll, abstain as to the remainder.
What was that again?
Yes, to payroll, abstaining as to the rest of it.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Uh, yes on payroll, no on, no on the other bills. Number.
I'd like to move item number 13.
Second.
Transfer of funds.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Can you come back for any questions?
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
He passes. 14 and 15, Steve?
14 and 13.
No, 14, 14 and 15, yeah. June 30th. Yes, sir.
Are you moving on?
Yes.
Oh, I'm seconding that. I wasn't sure. All right, that's why I applied this.
Any, any, any discussion? I have, I have a concern, Barbara. When, when I read the May report and then compare it to the June report, there are some discrepancies between the two. In particular, the, the health expenditures, our healthcare expenditures. And these are things that are, are certified every month. And when I see one month that we spent $10 million, eight, and the next million we spent only nine, 9.8, that's, that's a concern for me.
I don't have the May's board secretaries report yet. No, I can't help you with that.
Yep, no, that's, that's all right.
All I can tell you is that I don't know what you're looking at, but the expenditures are for a 12-month period.
Well, when, in May, it says we spent $10,800 on that account. And then in June, it says we only spent $9,800 in that account.
Is it?
That's in our, our health, our health benefits.
I have to say it.
Yep.
And I don't have it here. I would have brought it. So I can't.
Okay, that's all right.
Can't help you with that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Abstain.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
I'd like to move items numbered 16 and 17, please.
Secondary.
Oh, and a hand carry, yes.
Well, these got to be moved separately.
All right.
No, I still second it.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Abstain to 16, yes to 17.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No on 16 and no on 17. Mr. Dever, you're up.
No.
Oh, sorry, 18, sorry.
And I'd like to second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Okay, now, Mr. Dever, policy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following agenda items, one through 70.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I would like for everybody to note that one through 43, oh, go ahead, Steve, I'll, I'll be done in a second, Steve. One through 43 are second readings. And 44 through 70 are the first readings of, of the revisions to those policies. Go ahead, Steve, any?
Basically, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Dwyer just whispered over here. It's a lot of work. Good job. Really, I mean, there was a lot put into this.
Not done yet, but.
It's close.
Made some progress.
You're on a mission.
I think this is just absolutely excellent. If you've done this, the time and effort it is, you know, team.
I think that.
Thank you.
If we can have the next committee meeting, we can do our first readings on the last set.
I think we're set for the 13th. We pushed it back to Thursday this year because of the holiday. So, uh, next committee meeting is, we're meeting tomorrow morning, a special meeting. We had.
Yes.
Committee meeting, and then next committee meeting, the policy is the 13th.
But there's a good.
We should be good, but there may be new ones coming out or.
Yeah.
New updates coming at any, at any time.
But, you know, it, we should be close to our, one of our board goals, which was to revise, you know, do all the revisions that were necessary. So we're, we're well on our way. So any other discussions? Seeing none, roll call please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
I'll be saying yes on everything except three, nine, and 12. I'll be voting no on that. And 66, we briefly discussed the OAS systems. I have some questions about that. I'm not sure of it yet, so I'm abstaining from that one.
Did you say three, nine, and what?
12.
Okay. Thank you.
Three, nine, 66.
Yeah.
66 abstain.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Education, Mr. Dwyer?
I'd like to move items one through nine for Google.
Second.
Any discussion on items one through nine? Mr. Drew?
I'd double check. Tuition in Harvard this year is 48, I can't believe there's any more than that. I understand that we need to, we have no choice about that, but I just, ridiculous.
I just find the need to have to comment as the director of special services, that student does need a unique and specialized program in the area of the IP. It is the IP team's decision to place that student there.
Any other discussion? Roll call please, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Drew?
Uh, yes, on all except six.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
I'll commiserate with Mr. Drew. I vote yes. We're stuck, we're stuck with it. It's just something we have to do.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Ms. Dwyer, item 10 will due after executive session? Okay. We'll move on to Personnel, Student Affairs. Mrs. O'Brien?
Like to move items one through 21 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second.
Any discussion?
21, not the hand carry. Hand carry, second.
I would like to have 14 voted on after executive session.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
So you want to separate 14?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so then let me, let me restate my request. I'd like to move items one through 13 and 15 through 21 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Okay, second?
15 through 21.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Any discussion?
Just a quick clarification?
Shoot, Glenn.
The note at the bottom of 21, the district will reimburse the process sponsors. I assume that's processing like.
Fingerprints.
Terminal check and fingerprints and things like that?
Yeah, finger, background check, yeah.
Just want to make sure it was just worded fine.
Okay, Mr. Drew?
Actually, I think I have a couple of questions. Um, item 13, uh, will we do an extension of assignment? Does that have any issues with regard to tenure contract?
No. The answer is no, they're a long-term substitute. And there's somebody else in that position already, just on leave. So there's nothing.
Good, thank you. Item number three, where we are creating a new position. Why?
We, as you are aware, we reduced the staff member. We had a position testing coordinator over the last few years with all the changes in testing, park, et cetera. In assessing the workload of our new testing coordinator slash supervisor of guidance, we determined that some assistance at the elementary level would be helpful determining the amount of, really, to me, it translates to travel time. You know, it's a big district. The idea that we would ask our supervisor of guidance to be out of the building in the various elementaries, you know, often I thought was a reasonable idea to, to approach Dr. Anamon with to see if we can get some support at the elementary, elementary level to help with the communication, dissemination of information, you know, going through tests, linking labels, all, all the, all some of the, the hands-on items that are time-consuming. We are hoping that this representative at the elementary level can help lessen that burden and, and allow Ms. Keddo to really focus on her, her new role and, and, you know, and do, do a really good job with it.
And this is only 20 hours, right?
Correct.
Did, did we have a decline in enrollment from last year to this year?
I, I had to look at the exact numbers. It's fairly static. If it's a change, it's only a handful of students. There wasn't any significant change. I don't have the exact numbers. I could get them for you. There was nothing meaningful.
How about over the last seven years?
Oh, went down.
Over the last seven years?
Oh, down, definitely.
I think around nine, eight, nine, 850, 900 students?
Seven years?
It's, it was.
I would say a few hundred.
Because it was, it was 4,500 when I started in, if I remember right, it was just under 4,500 in 2010. And we're at.
That sounds high. I thought it was under 4,000 when I came.
The biggest graduating classes were 2008 and 2009. And those were about, I think, 400 and, no, two, I'm, 325 students in that ballpark in those two, in those two years. By the time 2012 rolled around, it was under 300.
Well, we're down about 1,000, 1,000 students from our high.
From our high school, yes, absolutely. Can you back to the agenda, please?
Prior to.
Terry?
Number 18. I think these people who are volunteering to produce after-school poetry society should be commended. Anytime you work with kids and poetry, it's, it's. Anytime you work with kids and poetry, it's, it's very emotional for them, and I commend people who are volunteering, I think it's wonderful.
I agree.
I agree, you're here.
Yeah.
A lot of that going around.
Glenn, you had...
Going back to number three, before we had the district testing facilitator, I think it was only the last two years. Who did, who did that job before that?
Last year, we had Dr. Pritchett. Prior to Dr. Pritchett, we had Mrs. Kate Brennan for two years, and prior to that, we had Mr. Gorski in that role for one year, I believe. Or was it two years?
And how was it handled before that?
Prior to that, we had a whole lot more staff. You had two language arts supervisors, you had a K six and you had a seven twelve. Testing at the elementary level was, was taken, you know, from the K six language arts supervisor and the...
That supervisor too.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot more staff.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kimberly Walker is already employed at the school, in their school district, and this is just an additional, it's not a new position as far as a new employee, it's just an additional responsibility for that particular person.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, my only question is it, we had discussed this for this year, so it really isn't a new position?
Permanently.
Permanent? Okay.
We'll readjust and recalibrate at the end of the year, see how it goes, but again, it helps our district testing coordinator stay in two buildings as opposed to travel to eight.
Okay.
So, you take the six elementary schools off of her plate and it makes her workplace a little bit easier, it cuts down her commute from place to place.
And she's going to travel, or she's just going to have the one central meeting with different people from each school?
There won't be significant travel in her role, probably one to two group meetings through the course of the year to disseminate information, the rest of it can be done through email and organization. I'll be traveling to that location because I'll be playing a role in this as well.
Okay.
So, she's a full-time employee?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's basically like a stipend for her.
Right, but, all right, so she will be doing this only after school then, after her regular hours?
Well, the, the position, the position she currently holds is that of a literacy specialist in the district, and all of our literacy specialists have one in the audience, they already hold the position of school testing coordinator. So, coordination of the building test is already part of her job assignment, and there's time built into their schedules for that. This is for an additional twenty hours above and beyond her current testing responsibilities for, like I said, dissemination of information and, you know, scheduling conversations and just the type of maintenance you need to coordinate all six elementary schools, meeting with Mr. El Taib when we have to implement our technology plan for the process.
All right, so just so to make sure I understand, she's going to fit this in where she can in her regular schedule, and that won't cost anything extra, but if she has, needs extra overtime, then this hourly rate will kick in? Correct.
Okay, any other further discussion on items one through...
Thirteen and fifteen through twenty-one.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
No, see, roll call please, Barbara.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to reiterate, fourteen we're going to discuss after executive session.
It will vote on after, after executive.
Okay, so then I want to go into the hand carries, which is items twenty-two through twenty-four, which is the personal student affairs.
Any discussion?
Okay.
All right, Debbie.
I just want to, I just want to clarify, number twenty-four is not a relation to Debbie O'Brien, thank you.
Somewhere it was.
No DNA testing necessary in these days, okay?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
That concludes personal student affairs for now until after executive session.
Okay, we will move on to committees and liaison reports. I would, Mr. Robbins, Robbins is not here. Mr. Bailey, safety?
No report.
Have you gone to any of the meetings this year, Mr. Bailey?
Haven't there been meetings?
There should have been. Did, were they, were you notified, or?
No.
No?
I have no idea, if there was even meetings, you tell me.
I wouldn't have been notified, it would have been you.
Find out and give your report.
Superintendent's roundtable, Mrs. Schultz?
There was a meeting on Thursday, September twenty-second. Some items of discussion were questions regarding bus cameras and monitors. Wompa was wondering if there were plans to put all cameras on all of the buses, including Jordan. Wompa wanted to know what the status, what is on the process for a permanent replacement for the Westbrook, Westbrook School Principal, and how that is going to take place. They, Wompa felt there's a need for student assistant counselors, full-time, needed for each school, currently they're shared, but they feel that each building needs their own. I'm sure this is a budget issue, but further discussion I'm sure will take place. There was discussion about policy in the schools where if a child wore a coat in the morning to school, that that child is required to wear it at recess, but during the hot weather, that is something that really needs to be looked at because it's become problematic.
Okay.
Signage is a continuing discussion in this district. Some of the signs need to be, they're either lacking or they need to be replaced, so that is something that is continuing to discuss, and as this Dr. Anamal just started, he's kind of getting a feel for...
Sense for, yeah.
Right, what's been discussed and what has been changed and what needs to be changed and what needs to be looked at. More discussion took place as a follow-up regarding the status of fiber board plates instead of styrofoam, styrofoam polyethylene plates, and they wanted to know what the update was on piloting elementary third food option, and then another discussion regarding when will parents be able to prepay using those credit cards. Turf field, safety, and deterring mischief and vandalism. Discussion took place regarding cameras, if any were going to be installed, and then there was a discussion regarding what the update on the roofing and auditorium renovation, how that has been going. More discussion on the high school walkway, which is the area by the Senzo Pan Road and the outside of the senior parking lot. There's been an issue with students walking there and the area not being very safe. Again, Dr. Anamal just got into this position, so I'm sure it's something he's going to be looking at or has been looking at, and that was about it.
I'll give you the minutes, I'm still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
State County School Boards, Marilyn?
There was a meeting on Monday, September nineteenth at the Brownstone, and it had to do with technology, although it was, the technology discussion was very minimal because the meeting with the technology vendor actually started at about a quarter to eight, and I really felt that he was more trying to sell things than to actually do the workshop to board members on technology, because a lot, a lot of the things he discussed, I think our district is beyond what he was discussing, already doing it and have been doing it.
Okay.
There is also a meeting coming up for Bergen County, it's another county meeting, but it's being presented by Bergen County, if I have my notes, and it has to do with merit goals for superintendents and for business administrators, and it's on Thursday, and it's at, it's a training program at Maggiano's Little Italy in Hattensack. School board members can sign up to New Jersey School Boards themselves, and it discusses, it's being run by Nora Peck, she's the Bergen County's interim executive county superintendent, and Dr. Matthew Murphy, he's the superintendent of Ramsey Public Schools, and also the president of the Bergen County Association of School Administrators, and they're going to share essential elements, elements of what an effective goal is and the processes, procedures, timelines for the submission and approval of those goals. So, that's another offering that's coming up as far as being presented by New Jersey School Boards at a county meeting, this happens to be Bergen County, but again, only those aren't invited.
Yep.
That's this Thursday, right, Marilyn?
Yes. Oh, and there was one other thing that we picked up when we were at the meeting, at the Brownstone on September nineteenth, there's a workshop free being run by New Jersey School Boards, it's future-ready working session, and there's one, two, three, four, five different offerings, but unfortunately, they're all down in Trenton.
Oh, Trenton?
I believe it's Trenton. So, those are, you know, free workshops, and, you know, districts are encouraged to come, and they're encouraged to bring at least one wireless laptop, but again, it's, it's an all-day affair and it's in Trenton, so this is on the New Jersey School Board's website, but I have this wire, I'm interested in looking at it. So, it's my reports.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
New Jersey School Boards, the Department of Education, I was reading, sent out a letter in conjunction with the, the New Jersey DEP on sampling requirements for lead in drinking water in the school districts. There is a meeting, I think, for the northern section.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, have, are, hopefully we're sending some people?
I've asked two of our maintenance people to go.
Okay.
Our new plumber.
Okay, good.
Starting tomorrow.
Okay.
And Mr. Tom Gillen.
Okay.
Who is for...
Okay, good. I was sure you were on top of it because the, both of you guys got the, the, the letter from, from the DOE, so.
The memo.
It's, it's, that's good that, that we're on top of it. It's being held in Mount Olive tomorrow, and there's just, there's new working guidelines on how the samples are to be taken, what's to be done. From what I read briefly, it's, you got to run the pipes the, the day before, then they have to sit without being used for eight hours, and then the sample's taken, no flushing of the pipes, so that you can get a, a accurate idea if there's any lead in the, in the, in the pipe, so that I think is important. Mr. Drew, I'm going to go over to you now for both legislative and technology oversight.
Sorry to tell you what goes on in the legislature in the silly season before an election. Planets seem to be aligning for a review, an actual serious review of the Abbott decision, and they may be, and this is more than, perhaps this list, lip service committee's been formed, they're reviewing whether we've interpreted the New Jersey Supreme Court decision correctly, and it just kind of looks like to me that this may be the last shocks of this administration on their way out of the door, the tanks are moving, and so there may be something with regard to that, and that may be used as negotiating leverage to get other things that the legislature wants, but we may actually see something come of perhaps a bit of equalization on funding among the districts, or at least being allowed to keep more than what you've got, so that's actually kind of interesting. I would assume that no way any change could be passed on that, but when they look at the legal opinions, it appears to be that they're saying it's been interpreted correct, incorrectly, so even though there's a decision out there that can't be changed, maybe we have it implemented. Love to see what happens.
If I'm not mistaken, that, were they, if I read right, too, they were going to try to get a decision made before or around February, so that the new funding that goes out to the various districts that would be adjusted, if it's going to be adjusted, so.
It may be something more along the lines of freeze the funding and, you know, dispersments that are being made in the past and then make future dispersments based on a different interpretations, rather than everything being in the same percentage as it is right now, but changing.
Yep.
Very interesting to see. Technology Committee, I am disappointed to say that I've held up the progress on that. I do, however, think that I am nearing the end of my time-consuming medical issues, so I'm hopeful we'll actually make some progress in this area, which you may or may not want to see.
Okay, Mrs. O'Brien, West Milford Education Foundation.
Oh, I'm, I, I feel like I'm the luckiest kid on the block here. I first of all want to thank each and every person who came to the color run, who's, who donated, who participated, who supported. To say the Ed Foundation was thrilled is an understatement, it, it was phenomenal, beyond our wildest dreams. The community came out to support a very good organization, a very good foundation, which in turn support all our faculty and staff here at West Milford, and the numbers aren't in yet, but what I can tell you is the following, number one, we're planning color run two. It'll be better than Rambo two, and it'll be better than Draw's two, it'll be better than anything, because we've learned, you know, a few things happened that we learned from, so that next year will be even better, and I, we're all excited for that. There'll be a spring fundraiser, which I cannot tell you anything about, so please delete that off the video right now, thank you. Please, teachers and faculty and staff, continue sending your honey-do requests and, and your wannabes, so that we can start working on that, and, and I'd like to also personally thank everybody here on the board for all their support through all of this, because it means a lot to everybody, and, and I, no, I did not go and wear a tutu this year, but there's always next year, so there is hope for me in the future, so, but again, from the bottom, personally, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry, we are having a meeting next Thursday, seven o'clock, I think at the high school, I'm not sure about that, but we're always looking for volunteers. Thank you, now I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
No problem.
Township Board of Education Joint Committee, there will be a meeting tomorrow, I think it's six thirty?
Well, I sent out the email.
They never confirmed?
I haven't heard from anyone else.
Jesus Christ.
So, you, Jamie, I haven't heard from Councilman Signarino?
Can you make it tomorrow?
Or Councilman Dale?
I'll reach out to Lou and see what he's got to...
They're going to meet us.
Uh, yeah, we, we were meeting at the, at Town Hall.
I believe so.
Yeah.
That was the plan.
Yep. Okay.
He called, and I sent out the email and never heard from him again.
Okay.
That's why we put it in their court. I mean, we've made ourselves available a few times now, and this is where we're at.
They want him, maybe he just doesn't check his email or something, you can call.
All right, I'm, I'll call tomorrow, I'll call him tomorrow. Okay, I'm going to move on to old business, is there anything under old business that anybody would like to discuss? I, there's, there's... I, there's, there's, well, two things I'd like to briefly discuss. And one was the, the solar. Has anybody had any second thoughts, any decisions, they want more information? So if we need more information, that we can maybe put a list of questions together. And I don't wanna ask Mr. Santibrino to come up again and Barbara, but if we could send him any questions that anybody might have, it might be, might be good. You were raising your hands, Terry?
I called our former business administrator because he's initiated the solar program in Paramus. And he, he was very positive about it. The only thing that he said was that they overestimated, they underestimated how long it would take to reprove the construction charges. So instead of, I think he said five years, it took seven or eight. It would take seven or eight. But he already has seen savings this year so far, I guess from January till now, for fifty thousand dollars. So that's kind of making me sway a little bit. He put the solar program in very easy terms and, you know, it's a, it's a win-win situation. The only thing is, the thing that I worry about is that we have the snow factor up here and the ice factor that maybe Paramus might not have. So I'm still thinking about it, but I'm leaning toward it.
Well, the, I thought he was pretty clear in answering those questions. When they factor in the, the snow loads and the rain loads and, and all that. That's figured in, not only with the dead weight of the roof, but anticipated snowfall. Anything beyond that is that reserve load, which they said was almost eight pounds per square foot. And that would leave the six pounds per square foot for the solar panels. And then there's also, there's always a redundancy built in. It might be ten or fifteen percent, but there's always a redundancy built into those, so. We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll go again. Go ahead, Jamie.
Just a quick question, Terry. Did you know how long they've been online for?
Seven years.
Seven years.
Years, yeah.
So then there's a signed contract that they have, which would be very helpful to.
Well, they are now maintaining their own panels.
So they negotiated a seven-year contract?
I don't know what their contract was.
Pretty sure what they did, if I'm not mistaken, was they purchased the panels.
They're doing their own.
They did it themselves.
That is a good idea to investigate.
They didn't go through PPA.
No, they didn't go through PPA.
That is a good idea to investigate, because the day they throw that switch on, they're making their money back. Whereas for, we're leasing them. And that's what I don't like yet, you know? I agree with the solar. I have an article that's coming out soon on my opinion on the solar energy and solar panels. But, you know, I brought some of the, the overhangs that he displayed to us. They look good and they work for West Milford because of the snow and we can park cars under there, but they don't work for the investors and they're not gonna do it for us because they don't make any money on it. So, you know, we're, we're boxed into a decision that the investors are gonna say, here's your, here's what we're offering you. And you can negotiate, but we may not move on that because we have to make money. So there are my issues on it. I'm, I'm not against solar. And there is a savings, I, I agree with that. It's a fact.
I mean, I.
Just something we gotta look into carefully, that's all. And we have time. Barbara, how much time till these things expire? I did come up with that question.
Twenty nineteen is when the thirty percent goes away. But the tax credit is only for someone that hasn't.
Understood, but that's the investors and that's how they're going to.
That, that has no bearing on us.
Bearing on us, but it, but it indirectly does, because if the investors don't make money, and I'm quoting Mr. Santibrino, they're not gonna do the deal.
Right.
So yes, it indirectly has.
So I would say that in the next six years, it's all gonna go away.
So we have a decision to make. Before twenty nineteen, we can look into this for a year if we want and still have it on the table, because they're still gonna make their money and they're still gonna look to make these deals.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked if anybody's got any questions that, that we... Go ahead, Mr. Drew. You had yours started.
I would really love to see cash flows on a spreadsheet. And I know that there's a, you know, this tendency, oh, we don't know that until you move forward with this or that, or you gotta initiate this study, so on and so forth. But I can tell you that you can go to a car dealer and they'll tell you how much it's gonna be in your payment card.
Yeah, well, Barbara, he did do something like that.
Without telling you, you gotta put up five hundred bucks. If they wanna sell us this stuff, somebody can.
Yeah, he, he did, he did a breakdown as to what we would save with anticipated costs, so.
Right. He updated it with the less.
Their estimate, because it's not a, it's not a contract.
I think they gave you one last week.
Yeah, no, I remember, I don't remember if Steve got one.
If you look at an actual contract, you're gonna see.
He gave us it last week.
Other than that, it's non-negotiated. They can say whatever numbers they want.
I'll go look, I thought I didn't have.
Okay, Glenn, you had a question?
Yeah. This is all gonna be very dependent on the terms of the lease and the contract. So is there any way to get their initial draft so that we can look at it?
I don't know if we could do that.
Is there RFP?
I think we, we, the only thing we could really maybe possibly look at is what's one of these other districts that's.
But it can't be.
Home Del or Absicon that did one with, with Kevin to get an idea.
I don't know that, that if you don't contract with him to do that, whether they're gonna release the RFP. Normally, there's a, a public notice saying that the RFP is available.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure if they were up on their websites for public review or whether they were some kind of a document that was only available through the architect. I'd have to do some background check.
Do you mean a draft of the RFP or a draft of the power company's contract that they would present to us first?
The PPA, Power Purchase Agreement.
The power purchase.
Okay, so the answer to that is essentially no, because one, we don't know who's going to bid on this.
Yeah.
Once we put it out, so we don't know what company. It's not like we can say, well.
There's no specific company they're working with.
JCVNL's gonna do this, we're gonna go to them and get the contract. So we don't, we don't know.
So they're gonna go to the bid?
Yes.
It's, well, it's hard.
I was under the impression that he had a specific company he worked with.
No, there's no.
Company, yes, no, I have to go over it.
Well, it's not really updated. It would have to be publicly advertised as a competitive contract proposal, where we can get people to come in and say, renew this. And we pick the one that we like the best out of all those, but we don't know who's going to give us their PPA until we get those people in. And on topic, one of my questions was, can we, and I spoke to Barbara about this, we're contracting, Kevin Santibrino has right this proposal up. Can't we say we would like a seven-year contract and we would like this, we would like this and have the terms, so to speak, already in our favor for that, these companies that bid on it? But I was told that, again, if the investors don't make the money, they're not gonna touch it. So. The answer to that is yes, but no one's gonna come in and give it. Right. No one's gonna come in, because, you know, although we have choices, we have no choice. And there is very limited negotiation when someone says, either I make X amount of money and you do the deal, or you don't, and someone else will do it.
We have an economy based on capitalism, so you have to expect.
I know.
That to move things forward, so.
Understood.
And, and based, Jamie, about what you were saying, having these panels on supports in a parking lot, cars could park underneath it. He said that we'd be purchasing that power at eight percent without a roof, or eight cents.
Right, and a greater amount.
And a greater amount if we did something like that. We're looking at.
Fifteen or fifteen cents.
Looking at, let's just say it went to twelve cents, because he said it would be between ten and twelve. And I, I believe it would probably be closer to that twelve. But if, if we're gonna save ninety-some thousand, ninety-three, ninety-four thousand dollars at eight cents, and normally we're purchasing our power and transmission costs are at that fourteen-six, and we go up to twelve. We've, we've cut our savings down to thirty-three thousand dollars a year. And we might have, we might have panels, you know, we might have these stanchions up and they take the panels off at the end of fifteen years.
I understand.
I mean, that's, that, that's something that I wouldn't be in favor of if, if they walked away, you know?
It's worked for William Patterson. They've been successful with that in their parking lots and it's a great idea and I've seen it and I've walked around the William Patterson.
Yep, so have I, my son graduated.
Wayne, Wayne, Wayne Hills High School also has it in their parking lot. The problem was, as you explained, the S-Rex a few years ago were two and a half times the value they are now. And so the investors had a lot more money to play with to build that stuff. Now they don't.
Yeah.
So we don't, that means if.
I feel bad for these investors. I mean, I fly them around in their private jets. It's just, it's a tough life for them. I really do feel bad.
Oh, yeah.
When I wash my, when they get off the airplane and I wash my hands in that gold sink, it's just, you know, it's very difficult for them to live, especially when they can't make great deals that are in their favor, you know?
Do I sense a bit of sarcasm there? I'm not sure. I haven't looked at that.
Well, I, I would, I would, I'd request that if anybody, Steve, you would raise your hand, you still had some questions. Jamie, if you have any, if you could, you know, send them to Barbara and myself, so I could see what your questions are. And then she can forward them on to Mr. Santibrino and we can get any, any other answers, because I think this is something that, you know, we, we owe to the district to save money when we can save money. You know, we, we, we have policy that says that we should look at ways to save money and, and curb our carbon footprint, so to speak. So it would be nice to see us try to, try to make an attempt at that, so.
I agree, but this, in this juncture with the, the S-Rex or the carrot that dangles, the financial carrot that dangles in front of the investors, we have time to make the decision.
Oh, absolutely. That's why I'm asking more, more questions. If you've got questions, let's, let's get them out and, and answered, so.
If he held off till the next board is sworn in in January, it's not gonna make a difference as far as the investors are concerned. And William will be on the board and he can have the pleasure of the negotiations. I just, I'm against it. And I'm not against solar panels and I'm not against the project. I'm against this specific deal. That's what I don't like. It sounds good on the, on the surface, but there's a lot of hidden costs and they won't be as great as their severance.
Okay. But if you've got any questions, please, please forward them to.
I have them, I know.
Please forward them to Barbara and myself. The other thing that I'd like to discuss under our business is our policy. We've made great strides in the past four months, or three months with, with Dr. Anamon as far as updating what we didn't update last year and trying to get into compliance with some, some critical policy. But I still, at this point, would like to move forward with going through New Jersey school boards for them to redo our policy manual. We haven't put out, I don't think, we haven't put out the money this year, Barbara, although it was in the budget for.
We haven't.
For Strauss Esmay.
You realize that you're gonna be doing the policy manual, not New Jersey school boards?
What's that?
You're gonna be doing the policy manual.
No, they, 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 they were gonna redo our policy manual and then update, give us the updates as needed. If, if, maybe what I'll do then is get the.
Not me?
No.
Don't look at me.
I'll get the, I'll get the, I'll get the contract that they sent, I had, they'd sent me something that if we were interested in doing, I'll have it printed up and I'll bring it to our next policy committee meeting. And I'll also have it put into our next packet for all the board members, so they can see what it is that they'd give us for our money. But instead of paying Strauss Esmay twenty-five hundred dollars a year, New Jersey school boards will do that as part of our yearly membership dues.
It was an additional fee?
It was an additional fee originally to have them redo it.
One time.
One time upfront. After that, it's, it's free of charge. It's a, you know, pay twenty-five hundred here, twenty-five hundred there, pretty soon you're talking about real money. I think we owe it to, you know, to ourselves and to the, the community to economize where we can, so I'll refrain from making that motion this evening. And I'll get that out to everybody and we'll discuss it, the policy, and we'll, we'll do something next month.
Like I said before, I'd like to have somebody from New Jersey school boards have, be there to ask questions by phone or, or in person.
Yeah, we could probably arrange that.
So let it go for what, what exactly the, the board role in that process would be.
Okay, all right. I think I, I'll arrange that. I'll arrange that. If there's no other discussions, need to close old business?
I move to close old business.
Second.
Thank you, Terry and Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, go on to new business. Anybody wanna jump on this, or should I?
Cheryl.
You'll take it. Jamie, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolution. Whereas the West Milford Township Public Schools has a rich heritage and tradition of outstanding athletic programs, teams, coaches, athletes, and special contributors who have provided support to our athletes and programs. And whereas in recognition of the need to perpetuate the memory of those exceptional people who have brought honor to West Milford High School and who can serve as a role, serve as role models for present and future generations, the district hereby organizes the West Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame. And whereas in doing so, the board wishes to honor former athletes, teams, coaches, and special contributors who demonstrate outstanding achievement, as well as those individuals who provide a distinguished service to West Milford High School in the area Whereas the ultimate purpose of the Hall of Fame is to honor excellence in those who generate greater visibility for the high school, its academics, and who maintain pride in the athletic traditions of the community and inspire others through outstanding athletic achievements. And whereas nominations in the West Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame are open to all male and female athletes, coaches, and special contributors, living or deceased, who have distinguished themselves in interscholastic athletic competition as part of a West Milford High School team. And whereas the West Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame will be governed by the Hall of Fame Executive Committee comprised of at least five voting members. And whereas the Hall of Fame Selection Committee will be comprised, be comprised voting members who will meet bi-annually to select inductees based on the criteria specified in the bylaws of the West Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame. And whereas inductees or inductee representatives will be honored at an induction ceremony determined by the Hall of Fame Executive Committee. Now therefore, be resolved that West Milford Board of Education endorses the creation of the West Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame. And it be finally resolved that the West Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame shall meet as soon as possible to establish the framework to organize and govern the Hall of Fame, as well as the rules for induct, inducting each of the outstanding athletes, coaches, teams, and special contributors to.
Second.
There's a lot of hundred-dollar words in there.
Go ahead, Terry.
I think this is a wonderful idea. However, I think that we're ignoring our students that are working for NASA, that are making strides in medicine, that are advocates in education, that are musicians on Broadway and various symphonies, that are artists working for several companies that have worked with Peace Corps. I, I think we really need, if you're going to make a Hall of Fame, I think it has to be all-inclusive. I don't think you can single out one area. We have a great school system. We have produced wonderful, wonderful kids that have gone on to do wonderful things besides athletics, and I think we should be recognizing all of them. Thank you.
I had the same exact thought when I first saw this. And I'm not going to say it better than Terry, so I'm just gonna lean back on her.
Go ahead, Jamie.
I agree with the other trustees on the board. I just wanna say that this specifically calls out amongst all the talented people you just spoke about, specifically calls out athletes. And we're open to, I think everyone's open to the idea of creating Hall of Fame.
And we're open to, I think everyone's open to the idea of creating Hall of Fame that may be open to other talented people in Westmofford, but this specific one, and I was never an athlete in high school, but this, this one calls out for.
But it should be inclusive, I think. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not saying anything bad, I'm just trying, we're recognizing the athletes for Westmofford.
Mrs. O'Brien.
I'd like to know where this came from.
Well, it came from Mr. Gillen, Joe Trenacosta, yeah. Well, you gave, I know you gave it when we had that.
Bylaws.
Yep.
I think most high schools have organizations like this to recognize their athletes.
We can add committee in, it's earlier September. We discussed in committee.
Yep.
Do we know what the obligation and role of the district would be? I'm sorry, did I step on someone?
No.
Sorry, sorry, Steve.
I'll, I'll move back, okay? You're.
There's no financial obligation for the district, it's, there'll be no public money, it's gonna be all fundraising activities between now and the first potential class in two years from now, so beefsteak dinner, golf outing, et cetera. The only responsibility the district would be, they would be meeting, most likely at Westmofford High School, to have their meetings every month or every quarter, or however often they're gonna be. So they're meeting in our, in our schools, but it will not be a budget line for us, there's no public money.
And, and one of the prerequisites is that you had to be out of the school at least for ten years before you could be inducted into that Hall of Fame. So it's not gonna do the, the current kids, but ten years out. Terry, I think that your idea, being all-inclusive, I think this could just be the start of something even bigger. I agree, we should be recognizing kids who were musicians, who were NASA, you know, whoever. I think that's, they, it could be incorporated, and there's an academic Hall of Fame, an athletic Hall of Fame, or just a Westmofford School District Hall of Fame, with an athletics division, academics, you know.
Don't you have a wall of fame? Don't you have a wall of fame at the high school also?
Yeah, but that's.
Because I know, like, in, in my town, the wall of fame is for people that have made, you know, significant contributions.
But I would like to see, if you're gonna do this, I wanna see a resolution for those other kids. I, I really do.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, so that we can consider how to modify it to include academic performance and other areas of performance for reconsideration.
Second.
All right. Mr. Bailey.
Just.
One minute, real quick. One minute, Mr. Bailey. We have to, since that motion got put out in the second discussion.
There's no discussion. Motion to table.
Oh, oh, motion, oh, yeah, you're right. Motion to table. There's a, a motion been put on the table in second to, to table this, so Barbara, I'd like to ask for, roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey.
Excuse me, can I comment before we take the vote? That's always my handful to be recognized.
So there's a motion to table, there's no discussion on it?
Oh, no discussion.
Not on the motion to table?
Not on the motion to table.
What is the clarification, please? What's the motion?
The, the motion.
To postpone the vote.
To postpone the vote until we can get, you know, other, other things, academics and.
Look into expanding the.
Expanding the Hall of Fame, just outside athletics.
So now, fellas, you know, so my question is, I missed the vote discussing the Hall of Fame, which is now gonna be canceled to a future time.
Point of privilege, Greg. Use the point of.
Correct? I'm sorry?
Utilize the point of privilege after.
After the vote?
Yes, then you can just, then you can say what you need to say.
Oh, we can't discuss it afterwards?
Yeah, you can.
I'd like to weigh in on the topic, please. I'd like to weigh in for the vote, but if not, if you tell me, I can weigh in after the vote solely.
This is just the vote to postpone this. If it fails, then this other motion is back up. If it does pass, then we postpone it to another meeting. It's a motion at table, but I think it's easier to, sorry.
I personally would, would like to have more discussion on it, but, you know, protocol, protocol is what, you know, so Barbara, roll call, please, on the motion to table.
Motion to table. Mr. Bailey.
No.
Mr. Dever.
We, we will further discuss this at a later time, that's what the motion is for, so I'm saying yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Uber.
I think this is a great idea, and it could be greater, so it's a yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
This, Mrs. Schultz.
No.
Okay, so that's tabled, but she has a comment.
Yeah, great. If you have a comment to make, please make it.
Thank you. I think we need to be careful. I know the people that were behind this effort, and whether it's people that are gonna go out, put in their own time and effort, in some cases even financial backing to establish, in this case, an athletic Hall of Fame, or whether it be a Highlander Band Hall of Fame, or, God forbid, Westmofford Hating Technician Hall of Fame. The point is, you're on the risk of dissuading others that might come down the road. So in other words, of course I know all about this, and I think it's a tremendous idea, but now what we've done tonight, because this is what the Hall of Fame, we're heading towards, the micromanaging Hall of Fame, we've taken this specific entity, the Athletic Hall of Fame, and rightfully so, made a great connection to tremendous other achievers that come out of our, our township school system. But the fact of the matter is, these people are interested in that aspect of it, just like there's, I'm sure like a teacher's Hall of Fame, there's various Hall of Fames. So their intent was not to, like, single out those that were involved in the different and various athletic programs, whether it's athletes themselves, or somebody who comes to mind immediately, that I would make sure goes into the first class of a Hall of Fame, a guy who just comes here and volunteers his services for forty years, and that would be.
Mr. Henry.
Who?
Bob Henry.
No.
Mike Derrin.
Winner.
Yep.
So in other words, I think we're gonna come to our senses, but none of us here are against, great idea, put together a group, we start it up. These guys are taking it upon themselves to move forward with something that a lot of schools have, and they're just pushing Westmofford stuff. Timmy Gillen's retired, long gone. Joey Trent's are, you know, supposed to support this stuff. He's our A.D. There's other people involved. Now they come to the board, and tonight we table it, I guess we're gonna vote in October and discuss it again. What I'm nervous about is what if these guys say, forget it, go jump in the lake? I don't, you understand what I'm saying?
I completely understand what you're saying, Greg, and, and I think it is a great idea.
Yes.
And, and I absolutely wanna do this, but if the board, the board wishes to discuss something, I would like to see this brought up to us again next month, and we vote on it next month, and in the meantime, let them come up with something, but that's the, those are, that's the wishes of the board, it's, you, I, I agree, Joe and Tim, great, I, when they, when they pitched this, I said, how dare you, you know, how dare you make the former students of this district into volunteers, put them up on a pedestal? I think it's a great idea, and it needs, it, it's a long time coming, Greg, you know it just as well as I do.
So to conclude my remarks, because when I get, the minute I leave this room, I'm gonna call Tim Gill, I'm gonna say, Coach, you're out of your mind. And I'm gonna call Joey Trent, I'm gonna say, Joe, you're out of your mind. This is a good idea they had, and it can't even get board approval tonight. Everybody thinks it's a good idea, but we gotta table it for another month. I just don't know why, when these things walk up to us, slap us in the face, like Color Dash, Band Hall of Fame, Athletic Hall of Fame, somehow we muddy the water, micromanage is the term that comes to mind, and now table this for a month, which might seem like a minor issue to you guys, but I'm sure these people will be offended. Well, Greg did not vote to table it, and neither did some of my colleagues. I think we've made a big mistake.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Now, Mr. Bailey's point is well-taken. These folks are volunteers, but my thought was to approach them and see if they'd be willing to expand their original idea. If the answer's no, that's what we vote on. If the answer's yes, fantastic. Either way, we'll have a clarification, and we'll be able to, you know, know where we're going forward.
We'll bring it to the Ed Committee again in October.
Yep, and with them, invite those, you know, invite Joe and, and Tim, and anybody else who, you know, Dan, I think you were on that, so, I mean, you could reach out and, I think it's, listen, we, we know we got a winner here, but we can really make it a winner across the entire Board of Ed, you know, in this, in the school district, and we owe it to ourselves to at least try. If, if, if it can't come up like Glenn said, then so be it, and we go back to the Athletic Hall of Fame, but Marilyn, you had your hand up?
Jamie did first.
Okay, Jamie?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, unfortunately, it's been tabled, and we can't bring it back. I did say prior to this, I do agree that this is just focused on, I agree with what Terry said, what I, what I said earlier, is this was focused specifically on athletes, coaches, and other volunteers in the athletic community. So the idea is out there, Terry had a good idea about that, but I do support this, it's just unfortunate we tabled it, and now we can't do anything about it until next month, so.
We'll, we'll reach out to the committee. Go ahead, Marilyn.
No, we have, we have committee meetings. We have minutes of those committee meetings, and I sometimes feel that not everybody takes advantage of those minutes, or going to those meetings. And I understand things come up, but this was brought to the Education Committee on September fourteenth. How long do we have to discuss something that's quite clear, when it was brought to our attention in the minutes in September, early on, even before we had our workshop last week, or before we had this meeting, it was discussed what their intent was, and their intent was, you know, they came and did a presentation to the Ed Committee, and maybe they should've just come to the board, but usually it's brought in committee, and then brought to a board meeting, or brought to the board for further discussion. But their, their plan and their intent was to create an Athletic Hall of Fame, not any other, and I, and I, you know, understand where you're coming from, Terry, and I agree with you, but these volunteers specifically want to present and create an acknowledgement for the Westmofford Athletic Hall of Fame athletes. That's what these volunteers wanna do, so.
And I think that's good.
It's great if you wanna ask them to do more, but honestly, I think that it's quite clear what their intent is, and unfortunately, it's been tabled for another month, so.
It, it's, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this hasn't, this isn't a dead issue, we're not killing it.
Absolutely.
We're gonna, it's, you know, hey, man, God, how many years did we go without it? One more month at this point. It's a great idea, I love it, I told that to Joe, I told it to, to Tim when he was there, it's just, it's gonna be delayed one month, I think, and that's, that's not a lot to ask for. You know, they, they're, they've set up a committee structure, their bylaws, how they're gonna do things, and if we can do the same thing and incorporate all the kids, not just the athletes, it's a win-win for the, the entire district. But it's, either way, this is gonna go for the, for the, for athletics, so. Any other discussions for new business? No, seeing none?
I'd like to close new business.
Second.
Thank you, Debbie and Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, petitions and requests. Petitioners, wait a minute, we'll give, we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Petitioners that have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be, first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to speak? Nope, seeing none?
I'd like to close petitions and requests.
Second.
Thank you, Debbie and Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Glenn, would you read the resolution for executive session?
At nine fifteen P.M., I'll make the motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel negotiations, I have, and matters of attorney-client.
Second.
Thank you, Debbie. And we will be taking action afterwards, voting on a HIB and the personnel matter that we, that we put off until after.
Fourteen.
Yeah, item fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We are gonna go into executive session.
I'm just gonna run out to my car.
We are back from executive session. It is, it looks like nine fifty-seven. We have a couple of items to vote on. Terry? Terry, we'll start with you with the HIB.
Okay. Page fourteen. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number ten. There we go. I add, move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent regarding HIB, two seventeen E one.
Second.
As unsubstantiated? Unsubstantiated.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Okay, then Debbie, personnel item number fourteen.
Yeah, I wanna make a correction for number fourteen. The salary for the first employee, Eric Sandby, should read ninety-three, three-eight-six. That's ninety-three thousand, three-hundred, eighty-six dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to move item number fourteen with the correction in salary.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Uber? Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir, for making that motion. It is now nine fifty-nine. I got nine fifty-nine up there that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is officially adjourned at nine fifty-nine. See, you did get your wish, Mr. Dever. Thank you, everyone.